I want to introduce our speaker for this evening. The illustrious Ms. Gail Wu hails from Grand Bahama Island, the best island in the Bahamas. I put that in there. She holds a Bachelor of Science in Environmental Technology, Aquaculture, and an Associate of Science. She recently finished a fellowship on climate change with Cornell University, and she holds a diploma in International Environmental Law with the United Nations Institute for Training from Geneva, Switzerland. That's a mouthful. She's obviously brilliant people. She has expert certificates in Global Environmental Education, Civic Ecology with Cornell University. She is a Climate Reality Leader with Vice President Al Gore's Climate Reality Project. She has survived being made homeless three times by climate change hurricanes. She lived through the most intense and strongest climate change hurricane ever to hit the Atlantic Ocean. We are all familiar with Hurricane Dorian in 2019. She's currently working on three mangrove restoration projects to plant mangrove seedlings to restore mangrove forests on Grand Bahama Island that were destroyed by Hurricane Dorian. She has been trained in Sustainable Tourism Development, Green Management, Strategic Planning, Humpback Whale Research, Hazard Assessment, Tropical, Marine Contaminants, Biodiversity, Island Waste Management, Shrimp Culture. You name it, she's studied it. Alright, so today we, I want you to give your full attention to Ms. Gail Wu as she speaks with you. In 1988, she founded the Environmental Education NGO called Earth Care. You will always see her wearing the shirt, always representing. The organization is active in many aspects of environmental issues affecting our country and was instrumental in effecting a ban on longline fishing in 1993. That's a long time ago. I don't know if I was born. She has appeared on our local and international TV and radio channels speaking on environmental and fisheries issues regularly. She is a certified scuba diver. She has over 30 years small boat handling experience. She is a welder. She is qualified to teach high school and college level, and she has published extensively since 1980. I want you to give a resounding round of applause if for nothing else, for everything she has studied, for all the projects she's participated in, and for everything she's done for our country on the environmental front and ensuring that the word gets out. If it's one thing, I'm sure to see Gail on the news. So please give her a round of applause.
Wow, thank you, Janelle. You made me sound good. So, I'm here to talk to you about the climate crisis. Global warming used to be the name of climate change, but scientists changed the name to better describe what is happening to climate change. First, I want to show you a short video about Earth Care, just so you can get an idea of what we do and what we have been doing all this time. I'm a marine biologist, and I founded the Environmental Education NGO in 1988. So this is a really short video. Our most recent programs are called Earth Care Eco Kids. And so we meet on the weekends with students, and we cover an issue, an environmental issue of the day, and then we have a fun field trip to reinforce the issue. This is habitat destruction, habitat remediation, humane treatment of animals. We also go to the Humane Society. We do invasive species, sustainable fishing, the climate crisis, sustainable transportation. And we try to instill in the students a sense of community, a community service. So here, our students are cleaning the Williamstown Beach. And all of our volunteers, the adults who work with us, no one gets paid a salary. They just do it as a volunteer. Many of our students have gone on to become marine biologists, environmental scientists, coral restoration specialists. And we have one young man who became a hard hat commercial diver. And he told us that he did it because he got such a love of the ocean from spending time with us when he was a young student. From time to time, I'm asked to speak to television stations about environmental issues, global issues, and so... It's taking a while. This is me talking to a US station about the cruise ship terminals that was going to be built in Bimini that was going to destroy 14 coral reef dive sites. Here, I'm talking about Martin Marietta, Bahama Rock. They were, their blasting was damaging people's houses in various areas around the island. We also do public town meetings such as this. This one is about Bahama Rock's blasting. We did it in the church. It was standing room only. We also teach STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Here, our students had just come from planting mangroves, and then they toured an aquaponics facility. That one is, was at the Garden of the Groves. Here, I'm speaking to a school about the climate crisis. We also bring in specialists from the Mangrove Action Project. This is Martin Keely. He comes from the Cayman Islands. He writes curricula for mangrove education for schools around the world. This is before the pandemic. We don't really meet indoors much anymore. We do it outdoors. But so that's just a little taste of what we do and why we do it. We're hoping to teach the youth and the young adults how to save the planet, or if they can't save it, how to live on it comfortably. Because we're screwing it up. So, this is our planet from space, and we're facing a climate crisis that many have labeled an existential threat. What makes the photograph so unique and powerful is that it captures the complete circle of the Earth, helping us see the big picture of the planet, of our planet, and our lives on it. It was the first time the Apollo mission made it possible to capture almost the entire southern polar ice cap. By now, there are really only three questions remaining to be addressed. Must we change? Can we change? And will we change? First of all, must we change? Well, the science is clear. The energy comes to the Earth from the Sun. It's absorbed, and then some of it is re-radiated back into space in the form of infrared radiation. But some of the outgoing infrared is trapped by the natural greenhouse gas layer, which is great, because it keeps temperatures within comfortable boundaries for all the life forms here on Earth, including us. The prob- Whoop. Let's say. The problem is, we're thickening this natural greenhouse gas layer with artificial human greenhouse gas emissions, and more of the outgoing heat is trapped, and the temperatures are going up. The Sun makes life on Earth possible by warming the biosphere, driving the water cycle and the wind, and photosynthesizing plants, including human food. About 71% of total incoming solar energy is absorbed, and the remainder is reflected back to space by clouds, atmospheric particles, and bright ground surfaces like sea ice and snow. Varied solar output is not responsible for the global warming trend in recent decades. We're spewing 162 million tons of human-caused greenhouse gas emissions into the sky every single day, as if it's an open sewer. It's not an open sewer. This is our atmosphere. The lower part of the atmosphere where the greenhouse gases are collected is shockingly thin, and we're filling it up. And as a consequence, the accumulated amount of greenhouse gas pollution traps as much extra heat as would be released by 600,000 first-generation atomic bombs going off every 24 hours all around the world. This is causing a huge amount of damage. And where is it coming from? Well, it's coming from the burning of fossil fuels in transportation and energy production, mining, agriculture, particularly animal agriculture is a part of it, the burning and clearing of forests, the thawing of the permafrost, and other sources. But the main source by far is the burning of fossil fuels, which really went into overdrive after World War II. And now we see this huge accumulation of carbon dioxide. As a consequence, the temperatures on the Earth have been going up steadily, setting new records all the time. We can see it happening. Surface temperatures in each of the last four decades have been successively warmer than in any preceding decade since 1850. In fact, 19 of the 20 hottest years ever measured with instruments have been since 2002. And the seventh hottest of all have been the last seven. This trend is abundantly clear, and people are feeling it. On one day earlier in 2021, there were at least four countries that hit temperatures above 50 degrees Celsius, 122 degrees Fahrenheit. And the single most anomalous event ever measured was in the Pacific Northwest of North America earlier in 2021. Just shockingly high temperatures, all the way up into British Columbia. Europe hit its all-time record-high temperature of 48.8 degrees Celsius, just shy of 120 degrees Fahrenheit earlier this year. And this is a two-year-old presentation. On the shores of the Arctic Ocean in Siberia, it went above 38 degrees Celsius, above 100 degrees Fahrenheit. But when we step back and look at the Earth as a whole, 93% of all this extra heat is going into the oceans, and that's disrupting the water cycle. From 1971 to 2010, the world's oceans absorbed more than 90% of the extra accumulated heat energy from higher greenhouse gas levels. And the warmer ocean temperatures have been hitting records almost every year now. This extra energy is warming the oceans, especially in the water closest to the surface. And the heat content goes all the way down below 2,000 meters. And shockingly, half of all this temperature increase has been in the last 20 years. It's one of the reasons why scientists like me are so alarmed. Scientists project that the oceans will continue to warm this century with the strongest surface warming forecasted in tropical regions and in the subtropical zone in the northern hemisphere. And the warmer oceans make ocean-based storms much stronger. The latest example in the western hemisphere was Hurricane Ida, which went over waters of the Gulf of Mexico that were 4 degrees Celsius warmer than normal, 7 degrees Fahrenheit warmer. It caused massive destruction on the Louisiana coast, and then it went farther north and, uh, sorry, and dumped rain bombs on New York, New Jersey, and Pennsylvania. Haiti has suffered yet another massive hurricane in the wake of the tragic earthquake there. The Philippines has suffered multiple events of this kind. India had the strongest storm ever to make landfall on its west coast in early 2021. And not long after this, a huge storm hit the east coast. Now, Hurricane Dorian was the strongest storm ever to make landfall in the Atlantic Ocean. Warmer oceans mean stronger storms. Since at least 1971, more than 90% of the excess heat retained by Earth has been absorbed by the oceans. Warmer ocean temperatures, which are like fuel for tropical storms, can result in more intense storms, rapid intensification of storms, and higher wind speeds. Trends indicating an increasing number of rapidly intensifying tropical cyclones have already been observed as oceans become hotter, including in the Atlantic Basin. Research suggests that with continued warming, there's an increased likelihood of rapidly intensifying tropical cyclones and an increasing number of major tropical cyclones over time. In Central America, we've had a series of storms. Hurricane Eta and Iota, just weeks apart. Both category IV storms killed a lot of people and mobilized a lot of climate refugees. And it's the poor who are hurt the most. Pope Francis has made this point over and over again. It's true in almost every country. It's certainly true on a global basis. And the other thing that happens when the oceans warm up so much is that they evaporate a lot more water vapor into the sky. That forms atmospheric rivers that come over land and drop these rain bombs or atmospheric tsunamis. You can see these extreme downpours have been getting more extreme and more frequent year by year. For each 1 degree Celsius of warming, the air can hold almost 7% more water vapor. These massive rain bombs cause a tremendous amount of damage. More water is available to fall in extreme, single-event downpours. In the United States, in Waverly, Tennessee, there was an atmospheric tsunami that killed 22 people in this small town. And it's not unlike events that have been happening all over the world. And because of warmer temperatures, more precipitation is falling as rain than snow. Zhengzhou, in the Henan province in China, more than 300 people were killed there. Extreme downpours are sometimes characterized by recurrence intervals, one in 100 years, one in 1,000 years, one in 10,000 years, et cetera. Probabilities that such rain events will occur in a given year based on the historical average. You can go around and see all over the world. In Japan, almost 1.5 million people were displaced by this. Climate models predict a majority of the world will be at increased risk to extreme downpours in this century. And in Germany, and also in Belgium and the Netherlands. This is a before and after picture, after the rain bomb in Germany that killed so many people. In Brazil and elsewhere in South America, almost half a million people were affected in Brazil by this event. In Africa, half a million people displaced by this flood event. And the same extra heat that is causing this evaporation of the oceans and the rain bombs and floods and mudslides is also pulling the moisture out of the topsoil around the world and making the droughts much deeper and longer. 93% of the US West is now experiencing moderate to exceptional drought. The largest state, California, nearly half of it is in exceptional drought. We're seeing the same thing in Brazil. We're seeing the same thing in parts of China. In Africa, the southern cone of Africa is facing a hunger crisis now. 100 million people at risk because of continued climate-related droughts there. And when there is more drought and higher temperatures, the fires increase in lockstep, as you can see from the records. There have been gigantic fires in the United States. Wildfires are becoming bigger and more intense, burning hotter and longer. We've seen them elsewhere in the world, in Greece and southern Europe. In South America, and probably most of all in Siberia, where the television news cameras find it difficult to reach those areas, fire seasons are also lasting longer. But if you add all these climate-related disasters up, as the insurance companies and reinsurance companies do, you can see what's happening worldwide. And the extra heat is also melting the ice in Greenland and Antarctica. This glacier is gone in Greenland now. And NASA has studied the decline of the ice mass in Greenland. It is disappearing four times faster than they had predicted. The same thing is true in Antarctica. Decade by decade, we see the accelerated ice loss. And of course, this raises sea levels all over the world. The top 10 cities at risk by population, a lot of them are in South Asia and Southeast Asia. Measured by assets at risk, the number one city at risk is Miami, then Guangzhou, then New York, and Newark. Sea level rise is why this octopus showed up in a parking garage in Miami. This kind of sunny-day flooding, as they call it, driven by sea level rise and storm surge, is getting worse in many parts of the world, including Latin America. We're seeing a lot of infrastructure at risk. In the balance of this century, more than 14 trillion of real estate assets are at risk from coastal flooding. We can slow it down, but we have to act soon. Most at risk are those who live on the low-lying Pacific islands, like the citizens of Kirbati, some of whom have already been directed toward property purchase elsewhere for them to live. This is a national security issue. In the United States, it's been recognized as such for a while. In many countries, not least because of the climate refugee flows that are predicted to increase quite dramatically. These are the so-called unlivable areas at present. But the scientists are warning us that the places that would be unlivable because of the combination of high temperatures and high humidity are predicted to expand dramatically. Lots of climate refugees are already leaving the places they have always called home. More than 10 million last year. Four times as many as were mobilized. We're, sorry, let me start over. Four times as many were mobilized by the climate crisis than by violence and conflict. The Lancet Commission, very respected, has predicted we could see up to 1 billion climate refugees in the balance of this century. The climate crisis is also the biggest threat, health threat, to humanity. One reason is because we keep extending into the previously wild areas of the world, and we're seeing five new infectious diseases emerge every year now, many of them from viruses we haven't encountered in the past. And 3/4 of these new diseases are called zoonotic, meaning of course that they come from animals to humans, like the COVID-19 virus. Whatever route it took from the bats to the humans, it is thought to have originated in bats. Oh, I'm off my slides. We see study after study showing that when more land is cleared that used to be wild, these diseases go up. There's a 10% increase in malaria in Indonesia for every 1% extra loss of the forest cover. Tropical diseases are moving towards the poles in the northern and southern hemisphere. Air travel has a good bit to do with this, but the places where these diseases take root and become endemic, that's driven by the changing conditions caused by the climate crisis. The coal pollution when we burn fossil fuels is also causing a huge amount of damage. The particulate pollution that is worst is in India and China and in a number of other places around the world. This air pollution kills 9 million people per year, more than many pandemics put together. So switching away from fossil fuels makes sense for lots of reasons. Also because the climate crisis is also a biodiversity crisis causing the sixth great extinction and putting at risk 50% of the land-based species that we share this earth with. So when you add up all of these costs, it is incalculable. We have to solve this crisis. So the answer to the first question, must we change? Yes, we must. So what about the second question? Can we change? I'm going to give you the answer. Well, here's great news, because we have the solutions at hand. 21 years ago, the best projection for wind energy is that we could reach 30 gigawatts by 2010. Well, we've exceeded that by 24 times over. We're seeing the installation of wind energy all over the world at an accelerating rate. England, where the coal-burning revolution began, now gets 26 times as much electricity from renewables as it does from coal. And on many days, they don't burn coal at all anymore. Worldwide, wind by itself could supply 40 times as much electricity as the entire world uses. The story is even more dramatic where solar is concerned. The best predictions 19 years ago were that we could grow it by 1 gigawatt per year by 2010. Well, when 2010 rolled around, we beat that goal by 17 times over. And last year, we beat that goal 132 times over. This revolution is unfolding even more rapidly than the one with wind energy. This is still accelerating. And the cost is still going down because it gets cheaper and cheaper every single year. China is installing the most solar panels and windmills, and all over the world, we're seeing this change. In South Africa, where they have been very heavily coal-dependent, they're beginning to switch to solar energy. In Chile, look. After a halting start, look at what they have under construction right now and approved for construction to begin. This is a breakout scenario that we're seeing in many places around the world. It's absolutely astonishing that they're now in a position where they can close many more of their fossil fuel plants and get rid of them altogether before very long. And we get enough energy from the Sun in one hour to supply all of the energy needs of the entire world for a full year. So we're not going to run out of it. When we get better storage, we've already seen increases. I'm going to rescale this graph to show the $1 trillion industry that's emerging over the next 20 years. Then that ex- Then that expands the reach of solar energy and wind energy to hours when the sun's not shining and the wind's not blowing. Then we're seeing the revolution in transportation. With electric vehicles becoming much cheaper than internal combustion engine vehicles. And within three years, that will be true for virtually every model category. General Motors and Ford in the United States and auto companies all over the world are making a dramatic shift as quickly as is possible. And we're seeing the results with electric vehicles becoming more and more popular. So can we change? Yes, we can. What about the most important question? Will we change? Well, that's why we're here. And that's why the United Nations had the historic Paris Conference years ago, in which all one hundred ninety-five nations in the world agreed to cut emissions to net zero by mid-century. The U.S., of course, withdrew under its previous president. But now has rejoined under its new president. And at this point, more than half of all the greenhouse gas emissions are coming from countries that have formally pledged to reach net zero by twenty-fifty. And in business, over three hundred global companies have made a commitment to adopt one hundred percent renewable energy. And all over the world, young people are helping to lead the charge from Africa to South America to India and China to Nashville, Tennessee. So now it's up to us. Join those who are using their voices, their votes, and their choices to fight for a sustainable future. Use your voice, your vote, your choices in life, and speak truth to power like your world depends upon it. Because actually, your world does depend upon it. Thank you. So I don't, we have a choice here. We could either um see a very short, short slide presentation about what you can do as individuals. Or we can do question and answer and not do this other short one. What would people like to do? Okay, so should we do questions after? Okay. Give me one second. I just happen to have the script for that. Okay, so what can I do to decelerate the climate crisis? First, make your voice heard by those in power. Write letters to government, start petitions, speak to civic groups. Last resort, but most effective, demonstrate. Talk about. This is uh, when we demonstrated in front of the House Assembly for three sustained days. And on the third day, our prime minister came out and invited us in to hear him read the legislation that would ban long-line fishing, which is what we were asking for. So that's why I'm saying demonstration is actually, in this country, the most effective. They don't really look at petitions very much. So eat less meat and dairy. Try a plant-rich diet. You don't have to cut meat out completely, but just try and add more vegetables and um it actually isn't that bad. I've been trying to do it for quite a, quite some time. I haven't cut out meat completely, but I'm trying to be more plant-rich. But the meat industry and industrial agriculture are depleting the soil globally. And as they do that, they're emitting huge amounts of methane, which is a very destructive greenhouse gas. This is a hard one, I know, because we're in a tourism country, but do not fly if you do not absolutely have to. Airplane flights contribute significant amounts of greenhouse gases to our thin atmosphere. If you have to fly, pay extra for carbon offsetting. Um, my professor at Cornell, Mary Ann, used to do a lot of trips to China because we have a lot of students there. But she's, she cut back her travel to China. But when she does have to go to a conference, what she does is she's found an organization in New York. And they do, they sell carbon offsets. So she calculates how much distance she's going to fly back and forth. And then she pays that organization um an amount of money that she can tell them what to do with it. So I think for her last trip, she donated the money and the money went to getting a couple who didn't have insulation or heating in their house. And they lived in New York, so they needed to be, save themselves from cold in the winter. So that was her, her project for that particular flight. But she does it now, I know, for each and every flight she has to take. Try to reduce your use of cars that use gasoline, diesel, or fossil fuels. And encourage people you know to invest in getting electric cars, if possible. I noticed our government made an investment and all of the ministries on Grand Bahama now have electric vehicles. If you go to the Harold de Gregory Building, you'll see where they plug them in, in the front, in the parking lot. And um, their license plate says no, no gas needed. Um, I thought that was very cool. Small changes to your behavior at home will help you use less energy. Cutting your carbon footprint and your energy bills. Put on an extra layer and turn down the heating a degree or two. Turn off lights and appliances when you don't need them. Replace light bulbs with LEDs or other low-energy lights. Make simple changes to how you use hot water, like buying a water-efficient showerhead. And in my house, we have an on-off switch for our water heater. So when we're not using it, we just turn it off. Because who needs hot water when you're at work all day? Right? Um, so green spaces, protect green, green spaces such as parks and gardens are important. These are some of our uh, Earth Care Eco Kids. Uh, they were cleaning the mangroves, but they actually found the most trash by where the conch shells were being um, left. So this is just a few pictures of them cleaning their green space. So green spaces are important. They absorb carbon dioxide and are associated with lower levels of air pollution. They help to regulate temperature by cooling overheated urban areas. They can reduce flood risk by absorbing surface rainwater. And can provide important habitats for a wide variety of insects, birds, and amphibians. They also provide multiple benefits to public health, with studies linking green space to reduced levels of stress. I know I feel less stressed when I go to Lakaiya National Park. Find out where your money goes. Voice your concerns about responsible investment by writing to your bank or pension provider and ask if you can opt out of funds investing in fossil fuels. There are also a number of ethical banks you can investigate. Banks, pension funds, and big corporate often hold investments in fossil fuel companies. However, the discussion around responsible investment, weighing up environmental, social, and governance ESG factors, and taking them into consideration when investing money is growing. Everything you use as consumers has a carbon footprint. Avoid single-use items and fast fashion. Um, those of you who've been in the Bahamas for a while know that in January twenty-twenty, the government banned single-use plastic, the, the food containers, the plastic forks, and um, also supposedly the bags that you get at the grocery store. But I noticed the stores are starting to give them out again. But um, and at the same time, they also made it illegal to release balloons into the atmosphere. Uh, if you're caught doing it, it's a two thousand dollar fine or time in jail. So try not to buy more than you need. Shop around for second-hand or quality items that last a long time. Put your purchasing power to good use by choosing brands that align with your new green aspirations. So remember that slide I showed you of all the companies that were, were pledging by twenty-fifty? So maybe give them your money because they're actually thinking about climate change. Try to minimize waste. Repair and reuse things. Give unwanted items a new life by donating them to charity or selling them on. Avoid wasting food. Food waste is a huge contributor of, to greenhouse gases. Um, the, there's a pro- there's a project called Project Drawdown. And they have eighty different actions. You can, you can look it up on the internet um about what we can do to draw down climate change. And a huge one is wake food waste. So let brands know if you think they're using too much packaging. Some will take customer feedback seriously. Shop locally and buy sustainable product, products. At the um, the main thing that I like about buying locally, and I try to do it as much as I can, at least with the vegetables, is they don't have to be shipped from Argentina or China and all that. All the fossil fuels they built, they will burn to get the products here. And we have farmers who are growing broccoli and peppers and the things that we, we need. So that's a thing. Don't waste food. Food waste generates three point three billion tons of carbon dioxide, which, as we all know, accelerates global climate change. The fashion industry accounts for eight to ten percent of global carbon emissions. More than ha- all international flights and maritime shipping combined. And fast fashion has created a throwaway culture that sees clothes quickly end up in landfills. But we can change this. Buy fewer clothes and wear them longer. Seek out sustainable labels. We have companies that uh recycle plastic and make it into fabric. Um, just do, you can do your research and find out which companies are actually sustainable. And then use rental services for special occasions rather than buying new items that will only be worn once. Recycle, relive clothes and repair when necessary. Plant trees. Talk about, this is my note to myself, talk about Earth Care. Um, so this is um, some of our students doing a mangrove planting before Dorian. When we did our mangrove plantings as just exercises in education. So it was fun to get the kids in the mud and show them how to properly put the propagule in and which side is up and where the leaves are gonna come out of. But um, now we're planting mangroves in earnest because of climate change Hurricane Dorian covered seventy percent of Grand Bahama in twenty-five-foot-high saltwater storm surge for almost three days. So our, a lot of our mangrove forests on the North Shore and out east got basically drowned um, because they didn't have sunlight for a few days and then they couldn't, didn't have air. They were just underwater. So uh, we're, there's three projects that are working on restoring those mangrove forests on Grand Bahama. And we also do work in, I don't have a slide of it, but there's a community garden on island. It's called Our Garden. And um, Member of Parliament Irem Lewis began the project right after the pandemic in August twenty-twenty. And Earth Care students were uh like founding members, I guess. So we would go there on Saturdays and plant the seeds of okras and bananas and green tomatoes and green peppers and cabbages. So our first harvest, we donated organic vegetables and organic fruits to the children's home, the old folks' home, and to the Rand Memorial Hospital. Um, and that garden is still going. And if you want to support that garden, um, there's a fest, a market at Princess Park, which is across from the, what's left of the bazaar, the International Bazaar. And um, so I think it's the second Saturday of every month, they have a market there. People bring their, their farmed goods and you can buy almost anything there, honey and clothing and all sorts of things. Um, so the proceeds from that market go back into our garden, community gardens, so that we can keep, keep uh, growing those vegetables. And then talk. Talk about the changes you're making, if you're going to make some, to your friends, to your relatives, to strangers you meet at the bank. Um, just, the more you talk about it, the more you can spread the, the information. Because I think a lot of our problems are that we just don't know. You know, we, we don't know what the impact is of, of me buying this shirt and then just throwing it away next week. Because I, I got a stain on it, you know? It's, it's talking to each other that we, we teach each other about the changes that we can make about the climate crisis. So as you make these positive changes to reduce your environmental impact, share your experience with your family, friends, and customers and clients. Don't be a bore, don't be confrontational. Instead, just talk positively and be honest about the ups and downs. Like, I'm trying to eat a plant-rich diet, but I really like a steak every once in a while. So I do break down and have a steak. So you know, I'm not perfect. I'm not trying to tell everyone what to do. I just think if we all can get together and support each other, we can make the world a better place. And this is the last thing I'm gonna show you. I'm gonna be quiet. This is a news story from ZNS about um when I was doing my Cornell Fellowship on Climate Change and how I was, my project was LED light bulbs.
And the Indian elected to serve as a member of a great state's environmental body.
Did I know in the daydreams?
No. Three years now, local environmentalists are making history, not just for this country, but the nation. So we are, the group now is recently selected a member of the Cornell University Climate Change Fellowship. She'd run with thirty-five persons appointed to this global body, Italian Hall, it's like. Eighty actions were provided to the thirty-five candidates to help bring an end to climate change. Environmentalist Gail Wu says it's an honor to be selected by Cornell University. Wu says she selected LED light bulbs as her action.
And she's now issuing a challenge to the country to purchase the LED bulbs for your homes or workplace.
LED light bulbs use seventy to ninety percent less energy than these older light bulbs. And um, that means less pollution. That means less fossil fuels burnt and less asthma for kids, less discomfort for people with respiratory diseases or heart, heart disease um, as well. Um, these bulbs are inefficient. They're actually um, some of them are brighter.
She says while the LED bulbs cost a bit more, they last longer. She says she's committed to this project because she cares about the impact climate change has on the country.
The more fossil fuels or greenhouse gases that we emit, where, you know, our power plants fueled by fuel oil. Um, then the more we burn, the faster climate change is going to happen. And the faster climate change happens, it's not good for us because we're one of the top ten countries that will be vulnerable to sea level rise.
Wu says she has also been handing out surveys and has started the challenge on social media as well.
It was started on April twelfth and going till, I think, for two weeks. And then we have to show our professor how much impact we had, if any. And um, so I cheated. I started March twenty-first. Um, and I'm hoping to run it past the deadline because the fellowship ends May ninth. So I'm hoping to continue the challenge.
It's Halia Hall, ZNS.
So we can have questions now. Does anybody have statements, questions, anything?
Given your past work with Vice President Al Gore, how do you see the activism? How has it changed since, from then until now? Like, what have you witnessed that has improved? What do we need to work on? The messaging, et cetera.
Okay, that's a hard one. So right now, we're a little upset because the upcoming COP Conference of the Parties that's going to be talking about the Kyoto Protocol and the IPCC. The person running it is a major fossil fuel person in I can't remember, Qatar or Dubai. But anyway, this this man's in charge of the whole meeting. And so, of course, you know, it's it's not going to be probably friendly to people who want to stop or slow down the use of fossil fuels, which is the one thing that we really need to do right away. Countries, big corporations, all those kinds of things need to cut back on fossil fuels like now. Because we were already at one point five degrees this summer and we saw how hot that was.
Hi, thank you for all your work first. I'm new, the new professor of environmental science at UV. And I noticed that throughout your presentation, you use a lot of data and visualizations from around the world. What would be your goal for data or visualizations or analysis for the Bahamas that you could use in the future? Or that you could get students involved in that I, we can help you with?
Well, what I'm hoping is, I don't know if many people are aware, but our power company, the Grand Bahama Power Company, is installing, I think, thirty acres of solar in, in, within the city of Freeport. And so if we could have your students start with baseline data about power usage and how people's bills change when they're, they have access to solar power. Because I I teach online and one of the questions in the lessons I teach is, would you take a job that paid less money if you thought you'd be saving the planet? And then also the other question is, would you pay more for energy that was produced sustainably, like from solar energy or from wind energy? And I get varying answers. Some of the students say, yes, yes, I'll do it. Some of the older guys say, no, are you crazy? I'm not taking less money. I'd rather work in a polluting industry. So I think it would be excellent if we could get your students to monitor that project. From, because it's literally being built now. So you'd be able to get baseline data and and then data about, once it's working. And how how that impacts, not not just the power bills of the people in Freeport, but, you know, hopefully they burn less fuel oil down at the harbor if they're getting a majority of their energy from the solar plant.
Oh, yeah. Oh, thank you. Yeah, that was great. Thank you, Gail. So yeah, I'm trying to think how to answer this question. So I'm all for kind of solar power and all these alternative energy methods, but then you talk about electric vehicles and everyone going, and you know, and there's the other side of that. Which is, okay, so we need lithium, we need cobalt, we need zinc. So, you know, currently all of that needs to be mined. So what actually happens when you need to mine all of that is you're burning a hundred times more fossil fuels just to be able to mine these minerals and raw materials that are needed to produce electric vehicles. And then you need to go and, you know, you know, so it's fine in Europe or in the States or, you know, but but how do we implement electric vehicles and all these alternative transportation methods in suppose a third world countries, et cetera, you know. So I'd be interested to hear about what your your thoughts are on that particularly, you know.
Well, what I'm hoping, as you know, those minerals are finite resource, just like fossil fuels. So once they're mined completely, we won't have anymore. So I'm hoping that scientists and young people will be able to figure out the technology to recycle the cobalt and the lithium and the different metals that are used in the electric batteries. I talked to a lot of students, especially in Korea and China. They're doing a lot of research on basically electric vehicle batteries and how to make them better, how to make them last longer. And so people are working on the solutions as we speak, but, you know, we all have to support everyone who's doing those, that kind of research.
Okay, we have two comments from the Zoom chat. The first is from Ms. Hart. She says, for the environmental studies professor, calculating and graphically sharing data on the emissions from cruise ships at ports in the Bahamas would be valuable. And there are good tools available through the US EPA shore power calculator. And we have a second comment from Ms. Smith. As pertaining to school students, I believe we can start gardens, especially at schools with a large amount of land. This is just another way students can do their part to reduce carbon emissions.
Yes, I agree. I know Ms. Hart. I'm in a group, a forum with her. So there are actually groups of people who are trying to get the cruise industry to try to become more sustainable. If you've ever taken a cruise, you might realize when they're sitting at the dock and you're gone doing whatever you're going to do at the destination, they're spewing out a lot of fumes because they're keeping their engines running rather than using plugging into shore power. And so cruise cruise ships have a huge impact, carbon footprint that they're not really acknowledging. And so, yes, I agree with Ms. Hart. We need to get some data on, especially specifically Nassau, where they get up to, I don't know, six, seven cruise ships a day at at their port. And they're just sitting there lined up and all of them have smoke coming out of their their smokestacks. Constant, like, all day, as long as they're there until they leave. So I've seen where people in Nassau who are downwind from that are complaining because they're having respiratory issues. They're, they don't, they're not getting fresh air. They're getting, basically, based on whatever the prevailing wind is of that season. Because, you know, the, in the Bahamas, winter and summer, the prevailing winds go different directions. So if they're in the, in the path of the fumes, it's really rough, especially, you know, if they're an elderly elderly person who can't remove themselves. You know, it's, it's, it's not good. Yes? Wait.
What can we do to make sure, to improve recycling on the island?
What recycling on the island? My mom was to recycle metals. She had a welding company years ago on Longwood Road. And then she moved to Elustra. But a few companies came in after that, but none of them have stuck it out. I understand there is a gentleman who has a crew of guys who work at the, our Pine Ridge landfill. And they sort through and take out the metals. And then when they get enough, they send them to the States for recycling. But we don't have any proper recycling. Well, I can't say that. The liquor companies will take back the beer bottles. So, and they'll even pay you for them, which, not anymore? Oh. Don't buy colic. Oh, I just said that on Zoom. But so in in this vein, I just wanted to mention Lou Carroll, who runs the Pine Ridge landfill. You, our community doesn't realize how wonderful our waste management is in Freeport. The landfill that we have, Pine Ridge landfill, is state of the art for the Caribbean. It is a model for the Caribbean. Years ago, when sanitation services was bought by a French company, they put in the best technology. So each of our cells, which is, you know, the big hill you'll see that will be, you know, basically garbage. It's, they're all lined and they have piping all around. And the piping pulls off the methane, that terrible greenhouse gas. And initially, they were going to try to sell it to the power company. But the power company wasn't interested. So they set up a system whereby the methane is drawn off and it take, taken to a building and then it's it's burned. There's just like a little flame inside. And so all the methane is burned. But if you compare that to what we used to have in Nassau, when the Herald Road dump was just basically just threw garbage on the ground and burned it every so often. And that would catch on fire because they put tires there. And tires can become very flammable when they're left to their own devices. So but our landfill is state of the art and also Lou has created, using the old tires, he's created wetlands. He's put in two beautiful ponds and then they have now soil at the bottom and vegetation and the birds go there. We we have a group of birders and the best place to see birds on Grand Bahama Island is the Pine Ridge landfill. I saw twelve hundred laughing gulls there the other day. So, and in fact, I call our gulls urban gulls because they come at dawn and in the evening to, they go to the landfill for dinner and breakfast. So, and then they go back in the day and hang out downtown and look for Kentucky wings. But yeah, so I just want everyone to understand that. And Lou is also recycling oil. And he's taking the excess vegetation that people cut down and throw out for his guys to pick up. He's mulching that and composting it. So I I told him the other day, I say, I wish I could clone you and send you to each of the islands so that you could redo the waste management all over every island in the Bahamas. But I just want you guys to realize, you know, we really have a great waste management situation in Freeport. No more questions? Uncle David, you didn't say a word.
I was just wondering now, why, why, why wouldn't the building where they charge the electric powered vehicles for the government, why wouldn't they have solar panels up there so they could get the electricity to recharge them from the sun as opposed to plugging them in to the natural grid, which comes from fossil fuel production of electricity?
That's a good question, but baby steps. You know, we're just happy that they got electric vehicles. I don't know if you could, you know.
But it amounts to the same thing.
Yeah.
You know, fossil fuel is burned to produce power to recharge electric vehicles.
But that vehicle is not now emitting the stuff coming out of the tailpipe that's going to go up to the atmosphere.
But does the pollution standard down at the power company not just cause the same problem right there, only a larger volume?
Say that again?
If the fossil fuel burned at the power company produces the electricity, then the amount the cars would burn if they were gasoline or diesel powered would be the same as if the power company produced the electricity and burned the fossil fuel there. There has to be a common balance.
I see what you're saying, but still, when the cars are running, they're not emitting the the bad fumes. So, yeah, wait.
Solar power is reliable, but can be unreliable if there's bad weather. Wind power can also be reliable but unreliable if we have a doldrum type of weather situation where the propellers don't turn. What about tidal power, which is produced by the moon? And it is, can be calculated thousands of years into the future and is going to be just as powerful every single day, in fact, even more so.
I would love to see more tidal power projects.
It's definitely possible.
To be done in the Bahamas and what they could do with tidal power is use electrolysis to take ordinary water and turn it into hydrogen and oxygen. And then you could burn hydrogen in your cars. And that would not produce carbon. Because hydrogen, cars produce water vapor and it's basically the most reliable fuel and the most most abundant fuel in the world are the oceans and water itself.
I agree with you totally. Dr. Davis had a statement. Thank you.
Yeah, I would, I just wanted to say that if you'd like to speak to me later, we could talk about the carbon balance for that the power plants versus the cars. But generally, it would mean that there's just one point source of pollution that you could actually address. As opposed to having, you know, hundreds of people who some maintain their cars better than others and some don't. And that pollution also is not pervasive throughout your community. So there's a difference between how that pollution is distributed and how it affects you directly as well as the environmental impact of climate change.
Tyree? Andrea?
Really incredible. I said, I've never heard of tidal power. Can somebody explain how that works?
Dr. Davis, you want to take that?
So basically, it's the same way with the wind energy. So with the wind energy, the wind and turns the propellers on the turbine. With tidal energy, you know the water is going to come up and then it's going to go down, right? So if you have a dam that's placed someplace where the water raises to a certain level and you open the gate to that dam and force that water to all flow through one area. And you have a turbine in there, when that turbine is pushed by that water moving into another area, like any creek that you see where the water goes in and then it goes out, you can see how fast that's moving. If you want that to turn a turbine, then you could use that energy. Of course, then you affect like the fish movement back and forth and other things, but that's, that's generally how the energy system would work.
Does anyone have anything else they want to say? Okay, so I would invite you to partake of, wait, let us tell you thanks. What?
At least let us tell you thank you. So, thank you so much, Gail, for your edifying presentation this evening. Please give her a round of applause. I do believe that you've enriched us all today. You took a lot of complex terms and you were able to distill such a huge topic for us. And I thank you for that. And I also want to thank our audience for your participation. With that, we were able to come up with a few ideas that I think you can, you know, mull over. And when you go into those big shop meetings, you can bring them up, like the tidal power, the suggestion about data analysis for the Bahamas as well. I thought that was great coming from this conversation. Also, I want to thank our viewers on Zoom for being with us here this evening. And thank you all for taking the time. And I hope that some of the suggestions that you presented, that we all consider those as we go throughout our daily lives. If we could just do a little thing such as participating in planting trees, whether with Earth Care or with the Bahamas National Trust, participating in beach cleanups. I usually host those monthly. I usually host those monthly, ensuring that you attend farmers markets supporting our local growers. That's super important. And if you can carpool or ride your bike, Gail does that sometimes. Amazing. So those are little things and we all gained really great tips. So thank you again. Once more, a round of applause for Gail. And we do have some refreshments for you over the side, little snacks and also some lemongrass bush tea. So thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Safe journey home.